Spreads where you have circular reference. Everybody going chasing their tail.
He could have forgotten the time chain.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is actually probably a minute past our start time. We're, I guess Commissioner Kidd will be along. We haven't, we haven't heard as to his whereabouts, but maybe he'll be joining us soon. But we have business at hand tonight and we, so we called to order this special meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners as we deal with how to, how to spend $28 million. You never thought that'd be a problem, but we've had, now we're having more requests than we have money. So we had a meeting, I guess, two weeks ago with some of the agencies around the county and with their, with their wants and needs. And tonight we're dealing with our infrastructure and of course, that gets into big bucks. And I just noticed from the faces in the audience tonight, all of you know what, what your ask was and we hope that we, our, our plan here is to take advantage of every dime we can that will build and better secure the future of Randolph County. And infrastructure is, I think, the best way to do that. And we've got it spread out around the county. One of the other issues, and Hal's going to do a little more formal introduction tonight, but one of our issues, at the same time while we got 28 million, the state of North Carolina got about $3 billion. And there's a couple of our projects that, or that's on our list, that's also on the list at the General Assembly. So if they want to spend the money, that's okay with us and we'll use it to, to, to better take care of our projects here in the county. We also have what we usually call our landfill money. We did not budget that money this year. It's about 1.2 million and we put that into what we, our budget item is our strategic planning budget. And so we've got some of that money that, that we can use for a couple of the little local projects around the county. So that's part of the process that we go through and just vetting, that's the reason you're here tonight, to vet those requests and see how we can put it together over the next two years for the benefit of this county. And thank all of you for being here tonight and not just tonight, but for being a part of Randolph County for as long as you have. So we welcome you and I, I don't want to forget to welcome those on YouTube or Facebook that might be sitting in, tuning into our presentations tonight. I think several around the county have learned to do that in the last year and a half and that's a good thing and our IT folks that are here tonight to help make all that possible. So welcome to you and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Hal to do a little, little different or a little more detailed introduction.
Well, Darrell just summed it up perfectly about the, the purpose of why we're here tonight and to talk about infrastructure. And this is just the beginning of a, a long process and, and a very detailed, complicated process because the use of federal funds is very restricted. This recovery money has a lot of federal requirements on it that the county and, and you will have to follow as we go through this process. So tonight's the beginning of what will probably be a transformational process for Randolph County. Without this money and, and all of you sitting in here, including the commissioners, you, you've, you've seen infrastructure requests and over the years and, and know what the needs are, but without this money, the county would certainly never be able to address some of the issues that we need to address. And the challenge that the Board of County Commissioners are going to ultimately have is to make sure when they, they make final decisions on the use of that fund, those funds is that it has the biggest long-term impact for Randolph County. And, and, and that's what we're beginning tonight to talk about what some of the needs are. And after tonight's meeting, we'll, we'll go into another phase of the planning process on infrastructure. So Mr. Chairman, we're, we're, we've got, the order of the agenda tonight is Kevin Franklin with the Economic Development Corporation is going to give an overview of water and sewer projects that, that Economic Development's been involved in. We'll hear the Seagrove Ula Metropolitan Water District, their request for, for major infrastructure improvements, the town of Franklinville and then the town of Ramseer. And then after the conclusion of, of their presentations, we'll talk a little bit about the process moving forward.
Thanks Hal. And I just want to make one other comment and y'all have been talking among yourselves. One thing that's, that's important in this process, with the exception of the Seagrove Ula Water District, but it has, it has something in common. You're all from a municipality. We're not in the water business. We don't, we don't read meters and we don't send out water bills, but you do, including Seagrove Ula. You function in that same manner as a municipality. And I know Mike remembers well when we set up that process years ago and we added the little word metropolitan to it, which, which brought in water and sewer. And it's, it's decisions that's been made in the past that we benefit from today. And, but we're working with our municipalities because you are in the water business and sewer business. And you, you bill customers and you collect and you, you, you pay. So it's a partnership is I guess what I'm really getting to. It's a partnership with the county and with the municipalities that, that are in these, in this business. So with that, Kevin, we'll let you get us rolling tonight. Anybody have a question? I'm sorry.
All right. All right. Well, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight and talk a little about some of the things that we have in the works and a little bit of the vision that we see overall in need specifically related to industrial development across Randolph County. So, I can drive? All right. So I'm just going to dive right in. Of all of these things, this is probably our top priority in terms of immediate opportunity. I'm also going to talk at the end a little bit about just kind of that northeastern quadrant of the county and, you know, potential project opportunities with the mega site and how that may expand additional development opportunities. So that's also in our mind extremely important as well. This is the Wall Brothers Road Park. We're just calling it our future industrial park. Likely the name of this will change at some point. It has about 160 acres right now. That is available to us for development. It's under developer control. The due diligence on that site is complete. Our next slide, I'm going to show you a little bit of a conceptual so you have a better understanding, but on each of these primary slides, I've got the county map and that red star represents roughly where the, where the site is, just to kind of orient you. Because I know you're probably not all familiar with all of these locations all across the county. So the due diligence is complete on this. We've put this site through the Duke Site Readiness Program and very positive reviews as a result of that study. The one thing really that's missing on this site is sewer. Water's close by, pretty feasible sewer, sewer is not. And right now, I think the reason that I'm saying that this is probably our top priority is our current industrial parks are pretty much full. And so yes, we've got some sites that are scattered around the county. Some of those are in a more ready situation than others, but much of what we're seeing in terms of industrial inquiry, industry wants to be with industry. They want to be, you know, most of the time with their peers. They like the idea of being in a park situation where they're surrounded by other manufacturing entities and it just makes a lot of sense. So, so this would provide an opportunity for, I'll just go ahead and take you to this conceptual. So I know this is kind of small and hard to see, but everything that you see on kind of the east side, the left, the right side of Wall Brothers Road there is what we have an opportunity to move forward with the development. This is a conceptual, so again, it's, it's just an idea of what could be. This is certainly, we're not bound to this by any stretch, but on this conceptual, there's a little over a million square feet that you see in available future industrial development on this site. I think the largest little portion there, we could get close to a million square feet just on that center area as well. So there's a lot of great potential future opportunity at this particular site. We've even had water and sewer feasibility study and the county participated in that with us, as did the city of Randleman. We got the final engineering report yesterday in our office from the engineer that completed the feasibility study. And based on current costs and conversations and pricing from general contractors, today's dollars, it's just a hair over 4.2 million dollars is the anticipated cost to run sewer and this would be from the city of Ashboro system up 311 to serve this location. In addition to serving this particular site, there's also an industrial site to the south just across 311 and across the rail, the railroad that is currently available as well, also without water and sewer right now.
That's what we call the North Ashboro site?
That's what we call the 311 South Site. Yep. So it's right, right there at the interchange as well. We'll get to the North Ashboro site here in just a moment. So the 311 South Site is right there, could benefit from that. It's actively being marketed by the owners for industrial development. There are some additional businesses on the 311 corridor south of here that have expressed interest in the past in tapping into sewer. I know one of those relative, you know, smaller business, but several years ago, they were having septic issues and they had to go through the process of doing some work to get that up, up to par. So there's opportunity for existing industry along this corridor. There's opportunity for additional greenfield site development in this corridor. We have this 160 plus or minus acres. Once this starts developing, we feel, you know, pretty good that there's, that there's an opportunity for what's on the west side of Wall Brothers Road. It's all part, it's all the same ownership. The owners just wanted to start on this side of the road in terms of development. So we think that there's a potential for up to around 250 acres of development on this particular site. And I'll just mention, not particularly related to industrial development, but about, about a mile up 311 is New Market School as well. And I don't believe that's served right now with public utilities. So, so there might, you know, there might be some opportunities to take a look at what, you know, what does this look like in a big picture in that corridor if you wanted to consider getting services up to that school. Don't know that there's any, you know, problems or issues that they're experiencing right now, but I know that has been a goal of the county over the years to try to get all of the public schools on, on public utilities. So this one is, it's developer controlled right now. All the due diligence is done. We're, water is available on 311. They, they have access to, to, to be able to tap. Property owner actually made an agreement with the water authority to be able to tap the line there. So it would be served by Randleman, you know, zoning and annexation, those types of things still need to be addressed, but in terms of opportunity, in terms of location, this is really a great, great future potential industrial park and we, we just don't have opportunities like this elsewhere in the county right now.
Kevin, the, the 4.2 is, it includes both of your references here?
It includes water and sewer. Yes, water and sewer. And I will also say that the engineer's estimate of 4.2 included, you know, when you, when you put sewer in, you've got to put the, the main outfall lines in and you got to put the pump station in to get it down to the city of Ashboro. The engineer's study also includes legs off of that to serve these individual sites as potential. So I think the initial cost actually is a little bit less than the 4.2, but we, we, that's really an all-inclusive price. I think the other thing I can say is that the ideal development process would be to start at the south at 311 and start working north. I think there's the, the great possibility for some spec development or the spec building at that southern point. And so you, you know, you need to push water up Wall Brothers Road to a point just past where that initial spec building is and you can stub it out and stop it there and you can continue to, to pull that north and develop as, as the development grows out. So there are some opportunities to cut down on that number a little bit, assuming that, you know, when it's time to do the construction, all of the construction costs haven't escalated by whatever percentage savings we might have by, you know, kind of phasing that in a little bit with the water. So again, that's, right now, we're calling it the Wall Brothers Site. I, I think eventually that that will have a, a new name that probably says something about I-74. Next site that I'll mention, you can see it's way down in the southern portion of the county. You can see that red star is the New Hope Church Road Site. It's right at I-7374. It's just north of, north of Seagrove, south of 134 exit there at, at Pinewood. So it's close to 100 acres. Due diligence on this site is complete. It was done actually a number of years ago. The owners of this site have about 20 acres under contract pending some due diligence and a sewer extension to serve this site. So the, I can't say publicly what that is. I know the owners are under an NDA with their client, so not, not at liberty to expand on what that 20 acres under contract is. There is a water and sewer engineering feasibility study underway right now. I believe Mac Sumi, Sumi Engineering is working on that. A preliminary cost estimate provided to me by the property owner several months ago was a roughly $750,000. And I'll just mention, since we have the Seagrove Ula folks here in the room, that this would be an extension that would serve, be served by Seagrove Ula. The, the goal of the property owner, if they can work through all of this and get the client committed, would be to have a three-way share, property owner, client, and county. Positive, the other positive thing about this, in addition to landing an initial client on this site, would be that it opens up roughly 80 additional acres for future industrial development as well. And as you well know-
Do we have a potential client there?
So there, there have been some conversations with some others in past months about the potential of putting a, you know, a facility on the, on the balance of that site. So those are kind of off and on conversations, but that, that site becomes much more marketable immediately if we've got sewer available at the site. And realistically, I know that, you know, the Seagrove Ula doesn't have the capacity of, of an Ashboro, for example, but given its location, it really makes a very prime warehousing distribution location, which generally is not water intensive and it's a, it's a great spot. It's right there at the interchange, at the interstate. And again, just to show you, this is a little bit of an old conceptual, but my, my goal in showing these is that you understand that these are not, you know, these first ones here are not just raw dirt sites that we haven't done anything with. There's been a great deal of planning and there's been investment in these sites to get them to a place of readiness so that we can move them and bring additional jobs, number one, and investment, number two, back into the county. So that's New Hope Church Road. The next one I'll mention is in the Liberty area and we've had some conversations in closed session about a project that's, that's looked very closely at this, at this site. So I'll just mention, it's about 147 acres plus or minus. It's right on Old 421. And the Phase One Environmental Study has been completed on this site. There has been some preliminary geotech where this client has indicated that they may have a building footprint, so we've done the borings there. So we've got some general information there as well. We completed in participation with the Town of Liberty, a water and sewer engineering feasibility study and I see John Gray here. That's the work of the Wooton Company to try to flesh out what, what the, the proper routes are and what the costs would be associated with. The client negotiations are ongoing. You know, I'd love to be able to in a month come back and say, hey, we're, we're back on, let's get a public hearing. But generally speaking, engineer's cost estimate for water and sewer extensions is just under 1.5 million. The conversations to date have been based upon what we believe we could, we could capture in state and federal grants through NC Commerce, whether it be CDBG funding and/or infrastructure program funding from the state. We believe the balance of the cost would be about $750,000. And, and again, initial conversations with the Town of Liberty would be that they may be willing to pay back half of that over time after the incentive period ends. So that would be upfront dollars for the county, much of which, or half of which would come back to the county over time. And again, I know there's precedence for doing that. I mean, for example, you know, when I was working with the Town of Ramseer, we were paying back the cost of extending water services down to Coal Ridge School. So we appreciate the county's willingness to help participate with those types of things. So I'll show you here, this is not necessarily a full-blown site conceptual, but this is the work that John and his group did to identify the route and costs associated with extending water and sewer to this site. They looked at a couple of different options for that and again, the, the cost estimates for that were just, just shy of 1.5 million dollars.
Kevin, does, I know Liberty got some ARP funds.
Yes.
Would they use any of those funds or, I know they've got other, or pressing sewer issues and replacing lines and that kind of thing. So I didn't know, because I know we might have discussed this before, those funds came available.
Right. And I don't know the answer to that question and I think, you know, at this point, they probably are a little bit hesitant to prioritize this project because we just don't know where, where it stands at this point. So, so really, you know, some of this tonight is, is, these are things that are going on. You, you may get a, you know, get, and you may anticipate getting a request from one of these local governments to help with participation. You may not. And in this case, I just don't know the answer to that question.
Hey, would you repeat the amount? I, I didn't hear exactly what you said that.
Excellent. You have a microphone.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate it.
I'll just want to remind you.
Would you repeat the amount? I, I didn't hear exactly what you said. You thought that might, anticipated being-
Sure. It was just under 1.1, 1 million 495,000 dollars total infrastructure cost. We did push this project through the North Carolina Department of Commerce to seek additional funding, grants, infrastructure grants for the project. And we anticipate the remaining balance after infrastructure grants from the state to be about $750,000, of which we would anticipate if this goes forward, the county covering that full cost upfront and then being reimbursed over time for half of that. Good. Okay. Any other questions about that? All right. I'm going to move on to Archdale. This is one where we have not completed as much due diligence. This is right on Highway 311, which as you know, up in that area, just a little bit further north of there, we have Main Street. So it's about 60 acres and two adjoining parcels that are owned by the same property owner. We have completed a Phase One Environmental Study of this site. There is an active client review of about half of this site and water and sewer extensions will be required. This would be served by the city of Archdale. And this is one of those where Archdale hasn't come to us saying, we need help with this. But again, it's, there, there will be infrastructure extension required, so I just want to prepare you in case there is a request from the city saying, all right, we've, we've got somebody hooked, we're ready to move forward and we could use a little bit of help. I don't know the distance. It's not a, you know, it's, it's, it's not like it's a three-mile extension here. I don't know, it might be a mile or so. So just to, to kind of orient you, those two parcels that are identified in red are the parcels in question. And the one that is currently under consideration by a client is the parcel on the east, the And down the road, if it would be helpful for me to provide specific parcel numbers to Hal so that he can pass that along, I'd be happy to do that as well. All right. Next one I'm going to mention, and I, this is what we're calling North Ashboro Site. It's right at Pine View. It's pretty much north of the JP Thomas property and south of the Timken property. So it's that kind of open area between our existing industrial park and I-74. So it's about 200, just, just shy of 230 acres. As you might know, if you know anything about this site, there is a little bit of topo out there that will have to be addressed. We do have a developer that has expressed some interest in serving as a partner here if the dollars and cents make sense to them. As a result of that, we do have a conceptual site plan. I've not, I've not included that here because we're not quite ready to, to put that out in front of the general public in a public meeting, but just know that there has been some, some thought behind this in terms of how a site would lay out and, and that has been looked at both internally by the city of Ashboro as well as by an external engineering firm. So preliminary site plan work, preliminary cost estimates. I don't have those cost estimates in front of me. I do say that, I can say that the city of Ashboro is obviously very interested in seeing further build out of industry in this location and they have expressed some interest in using some of their ARP funds to help make this happen. So I would anticipate, based upon our preliminary conversations with the city, that the city would be the primary funder. They may or may not come to the county looking for assistance for infrastructure for this site. But this is, this is another, I think, another good opportunity. We're just not as far along with this one as we are with the Wall Brothers Site, but you know, we're, at the EDC, we're very excited. There are a couple of potential, you know, 100 acre plus sites that could be available. The demand is certainly there. We just don't have the supply of, of product right now. All right. This one I'll just mention, I've had several conversations with an existing industry client- industry client in Trinity, again, not ready to name that client right now. They expressed interest in a possible expansion and consolidation of existing, they've got an existing facility there, and then they've got other facilities, both in the region and, and outside of the state. And there's been some expression of interest in just expanding their main facility and consolidating. Right now, they do not have sewer at that facility, however, and that would be a requirement because they'd have to build out over where their current septic field is, and they couldn't do this otherwise. So we're still kind of early-stage discussions, I don't have any cost estimates on this one yet, but I've had a couple of conversations and it, I'm just waiting to hear back in terms of what their, their immediate interest is, right? So is this going to be something that they want to start working on fairly soon, or is this really a five-year-out kind of plan? In which case, you know, that obviously is going to impact the prioritization of projects. So again, I just mentioned this one to you. I know, having talked to the, to the City of Trinity, if this moves forward, they definitely would be interested in using some of their funds for this project.
You don't know if that's what Representative Hurley was asking for, do you? Out-of-state money?
I'm not, I'm not aware of a specific request from Representative Hurley in the budget, but I, I will say that I have not had a conversation with Representative Hurley about that project.
With, with?
I have, I have not.
You have not?
Do you have any inclination on about how much that extension would cost? I mean, I just, just gut feel, I mean, $2 million, $8 million?
I think probably in the million-dollar range would be my guess. They will have to put a lift station in, the, the city has already had some initial conversations and believe that they can, that they've got a willing, existing industry that is not currently served. That would be a great, you know, low-spot location for that lift station, that would be willing to participate, and that there are, you know, at least, at least two businesses very interested in sewer in addition to this particular industry that would kind of drive that process if this would, if this would move forward. And I'll kind of, I'll kind of wrap up here by just talking a little bit about, you know, the, the mega-site, and, you know, it's no secret, obviously, we've been working on this for a number of years, you guys have had your, guys and gals have had your, your hands and, and feet deeply immersed in this for a number of years. We're convinced, based upon just what's happening in the economy at large, that we're going to land a project here, whether it's sooner or later, I, you know, I'm obviously not in the position to say, but at some point, we're going to land a big user up here. And right now, we don't have any substantial infrastructure in that entire area that would be able to support perhaps additional supplier opportunities and the commercial and retail that you hope would, and restaurant that you hope would accompany, a facility that brings multiple thousands of jobs in. And, you know, ideally, you, you want to be able to service additional residential, where you, you know, we, we want to be able to, we, we know that it's a regional project and that the region is going to be impacted, but we want to be prepared to capture as much of that impact in Randolph County as possible. And right now, from a water and sewer standpoint, we're really not in the position to do that. I know that the Town of Liberty obviously has, you know, water and sewer infrastructure, but it is somewhat limited. As you know, from a sewer perspective, they're using a spray field, they don't, they don't have a discharge point into any substantial body of water up there. I know that they have wells and they've brought additional wells online for additional capacity. Sometimes, industry doesn't like groundwater, they like surface water where they can actually see it out there and, and know that there's a treatment plant there, and, and that may be unfair, that's just the way it is, all right? So, so I, you know, the City of Greensboro, as we speak, is bringing water and sewer lines down Old 421 Road. They, they also will ultimately, in a next phase, bring water along Highway 62, and that will be, and we promote this as two fully redundant water sources and two, two completely distinct water lines till they get to the property. However, the City of Greensboro is reserving that capacity specifically to serve that site. And I, I know for a fact that they've received some additional inquiries to tap into the lines that are going into the ground right now, and they've declined those because they want to make sure that whoever lands at that site has sufficient capacity to be served there. Does that mean that down the road, if they overbuild, based upon whoever ultimately ends up landing there, that they won't provide capacity off that line? I can't, I can't say that they won't ultimately, but I do know for now, and probably for the foreseeable future, as they watch and see, you know, who lands there and how that builds out, they're going to reserve that capacity. So while that's going to be there, it doesn't help our dilemma of how do we get infrastructure to serve that location and be, be able to capture some of the, what we hope to be the, the additional impact from that site. So I've, I've listed a couple of possible options, I don't know, Hal and I, and have talked a little about this, I don't, I don't pretend to know which is the, the right option, and perhaps it's even a combination of some of these, but I know that there have been some conversations, hey, what if, when the City of Greensboro puts their water line in along Highway 62, what if, you know, it's planned to be a 16-inch line, what if it goes to, you know, a 24 or a 30-inch line? I'm just pulling those numbers out of my head, right? But what if we, what if they upsize that line and the county works to pay the difference in the cost, you know, just the difference in the materials cost essentially is what that would be, and is able to work out an agreement to tap the line for, you know, a defined amount of capacity based upon the difference between the 16 and whatever the larger line size would be? So, so I think that would be an opportunity, and again, I know that that opportunity has been explored and is probably still in, in the conversation mode. That's, even, even if that works, though, there still then has to be extensions from wherever that, that master meter is put to be able to bring water and sewer. And again, ideally, it's down the primary 421 corridor, which would be the, the most likely development area. So I think that could be an option. Perhaps there's an option to work with Liberty to increase the capacity, particularly in the sewer area that they have, because, you know, even if you work with Greensboro and get additional water capacity, that's, that still begs the question of how do we get the sewer capacity? So I think potentially working with the Town of Liberty to try to enhance the capacity that they currently have. And I know there's been, again, being an old Ramsor guy, I know there's been conversations over the years, on and off again, about, does it make sense to extend Ramsor water on up 49, do an interconnection with the Town of Liberty to open up some additional capacity up that way and along that Highway 49 corridor? Again, I, I just put these on the table as things that I think we need to be thinking about in terms of how do we potentially serve that area of the county in order to capture as much of the, the multiplier impact of the landing a big, a big project up there on that site.
Kevin, would, would Providence Grove, I know there's water up to the school there, would that be?
Sure.
I think we remember at one of the planning retreats, you know, there were some interconnections and that kind of thing with that, and I know they'd probably love to get some water circulating through that line.
Yes, yeah, so I think, I think that's another great opportunity, running on, continuing on up Highway 22, up towards, towards 62, and is there potential for an interconnection there? Yeah, anytime there's opportunities for that water to flow in a circular pattern through lines, you know, I learned a lot from Jim McIntosh, who's sitting back here, about dead-end lines and challenges that are associated with that and water quality and all of that, so, so yes, I, I think that's an option as well. And of course, that's, I guess that's water that's coming from Ramsor's water treatment plant, but that's Franklinville's, part of Franklinville's distribution system. So that's kind of our journey around Randolph County. I, I do just want to mention in a final, you know, final comments here, you know, any of these, any of these projects where we have an opportunity to get local government control of, or EDC control of industrial parks, opens up the opportunity for us to go after additional funding at the state level for speculative park development. Anytime we have a client, then that opens up the ability to leverage that client and, and grab some additional dollars from the state. So our, our goal in this is not to say, hey, Randolph County, we want you to spend all these dollars to do this all on your own. Our goal is, how can we find other dollars that require matches so that county dollars can leverage additional dollars and your dollars can go further for more infrastructure projects that are so needed across the county that aren't even related to what I'm talking about here tonight? So I think that's the first thing I'd mention. And the second thing I'll mention is that the EDC has hired a consulting engineer to complete a county-wide development study. We captured some USDA grant dollars, we have engaged the Timmons Group, or the Timmons Company to, to do that. I know they've done a lot of those types of studies on a local, regional, and even a statewide basis, so they've got quite a body of expertise in that. And our goal is identifying potential sites across the county. And when we're done with this, we will have very deep-dive information on six specific sites that show tremendous promise, and, and then we'll be able to go out and start talking to property owners if it's not something that's already on the market, and, and see if we can identify opportunities to continue to build out our product. And when that happens, then that will be, again, and what I like about that process is it's an objective company that does this work, that says, based on all of these criteria that industry look at, this is a good spot. And it really kind of takes, from our perspective, it kind of takes the guesswork out, and it takes out any, you know, any efforts that we have to try to prioritize those sites when we're, when we're not the experts in doing that. So, so that will kick off fairly soon. It's a six-month process, once we get it underway, and so we'll have that completed study, and we'll be able to share that information, you know, the results of that information with you before the end of this fiscal year. So we're, we're very happy to see that process underway. And that's what I have. So I know that was a little bit lengthy, but if you have any questions, I, I really think that we are, we have a lot of great opportunity, and, and I think that while we don't have the product that I, that we really need, thinking about it now, we're ahead of the curve of some other communities, so I think we're well-positioned. And folks are looking at our, at our community, we just, we just got to get over that hump and make sure that the facilities are there and readily available.
Any questions? Comment? Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you for your, for your time.
My name is Randy Teder, I'm representing the Seagrove Yula Metropolitan Water District. We provide water to the southern part of Randolph County, and we also provide sewer to a small, smaller area. And we're, we've got a, a plan to increase the size of our water treatment system. We're wanting to buy a package plant. Let's see if this will. The, the package plant that we, the, the facility that we have now is, what was it, the Lux facility, the Lux Cannery? We're only qualified by the state to have 30,000 gallons of flow a day, and we're looking to buy a package plant that'll up it to 120,000 gallons per day. We have 994 water customers right now, we only have 24 wastewater customers, but they are three schools and two governmental agencies and a camp. Included in that with the, with the, for sure, building of one more school that'll be in our area, and we're looking at some residential growth around the Pine Wood area, and also, you heard from Mr. Frank on about, off the 74 corridor, 73 corridor there, a build that's going in there, that's, that's also going to be added to our, our facility. The, the facility that we have now is just aged out, it's, it's going to have to be replaced, we're going to have to do, we cannot expand any, anymore with what we have, at the growth that we're going now is, is, we'll bypass it in a few years, so we've got this in plan, but the idea is for us to buy a package plant. The, the cost of that package plant is 2.49 million. It'll suffice everything that we see as the growth possibilities in the Seagrove area. Any questions?
When you talk about a package plant, you describe, is it like prefab and it's just like a plug-and-play?
You set it in, you set it in, just plug-and-play almost, and it'll, it'll more than accommodate everything that we, that we see in the future right now, and in the future to see too, because the plant originally was 100,000 gallons, and the age of it, and the state's just, has cut it down to where we're only up to 100, to 30,000 gallons a day flow right now. And we've, we do see U.R.A. Charter School being built in the, in the future, we've got two of their schools on our system right now, along with Seagrove School. Any other questions on that?
I think he's working on.
Are we trying to get something for you?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I've got some, some images of our, of our plant and our facility, but the, the second request that we have is for a, an extension of our wastewater system. We, we also have the two rest areas that are at the county line, the south part of Seagrove, on our system also, but this new extension would be out the Little Road, Little River Road extension, out by the Quick Check toward 220. The availability of that intersection there is a, a good possible growth area, and if we can get this extension run, it's 1.94 million. It will be coming from downtown Seagrove out to that area and add on to our facility.
Would that help also with the facilities that are there now at 74?
Yeah, yes, the Quick Check is, is in need of, of assistance with their wastewater also, and, and they're, they're wanting to hook on to as soon as we have it out there. The, let's see, there's other businesses that have inquired about that intersection also, but we just weren't able to offer wastewater out there, and that's, that's one of the main things that they're looking for.
So you've got water out there, it's just the wastewater?
Yeah.
Is that for residential or industrial growth, or just?
Industrial growth and residential too, but I think industrial growth at the intersections what you'll end up with there. It's similar to the New Hope Road exit that we were talking, that he was talking about there. That's very reachable by our lines that are at Black Lake Camp down on New Hope Church Road. We've already got wastewater up to there, and then we have wastewater already run up to the Pine Wood area for the, the schools there.
But you don't have it at the visitor centers?
Yes, we have wastewater and water at the visitor centers, yeah, we service those, since they've been, since they were built.
Okay.
This would, this would really increase your capacity to do a whole lot of things.
Yes, yes.
That you don't even know about today.
Yes, yes. It, it, it would benefit us essentially, yeah. That growth, the growth of the pump plant plus the extension out to 220, that's, that would be a big help too, yeah.
Which, which would you prioritize?
The pump station. We've got to have that first, we can't really do the, the little We can't really do the, the Little River. We've got to have that in place really to, to be able to do anything.
Now, which one, which, which one of these two do you prioritize?
These two, the pant, the power, the package plant. Yeah, the plant itself, yes. Yeah, the improvements, yes.
Pump station was.
Pump station, yes.
And like you, I guess you reiterate, but both of these projects you foresee like anybody wants to, as you run along the line, any residential hookup?
Yeah, anywhere along, yeah, yeah. We've got, we've got some residential hookup available now, but it would extend even more out there. The pump, the plant, the plant station is the main thing, getting it in, in, increased in size and serviceability for us to be able to grow even more than what we see now. So, you know, you're, you're looking at the whole southern part of Randolph County, basically. It's not just Seagrove.
But this, this is really going to help with a potential 20-acre customer.
Yes.
Fairly obvious.
Yes.
And then give you more capability over 75, 80 acres?
Yeah, yes, yes. There's, there's potential of growth around the, the Pine Wood exit there that's, that's talked about, even more than what we, we're, we know about at this time too. So they would be able to go.
Were we anticipating that? I mean, we've been talking about that. We zoned it some time ago.
Well, that's, that's y'all's call there.
Now, how much does a school figure in this process?
Well, the school, the URA charter, the, the one that's, that's not built yet, we're already servicing, we've got a, we've got a pump station there at the schools. So we've got everything in place for them to hook on when they get the third school built. Depends on whether they're in school or not. That's, that's a lot of it, but that, you know, they're, they're, they're relying on us. I'll put it like that, yeah. So we've, we've got enough to handle them, but we're looking for the future also.
You said, I think, was it 30,000 gallons per capacity? Is that what you, what are you doing a day? Is, or is that, are you at capacity?
No, we're not at capacity yet. You can't, you, you, we really can't be at over 80% capacity. So we're, we're under that right now, but it's, there's a, there's an ebb and flow going on with traffic, you know, the, the visitor centers, how much traffic's going on there, how many schools in process and everything. So, you know, we're trying to plan ahead.
The, there's two tourist stop period. Does that add quite a bit to?
It's pretty heavy in the summers, yeah. It, it kind of balances out when the schools are out. Schools out and that, that takes the place of it for several months there. Last year there wasn't a lot of travel by there. This year there's been a lot more. We, we ran those for them to open that up. It's worked out well. Any others?
Any other questions? Good discussion. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Sir, will you just sign in for me, please?
Okay, town of Franklinville.
Good evening. Have you got my presentation? Is that going to come up? Trying to redo it? Okay. We want to talk to you tonight about four projects. And these are, as had been stated already, these are high-dollar projects. But we also think that they're transformational projects, both for the town of Franklinville and for the county. So what we're going to start with is I'm going to let Mac give you a little history of what the county has tried to do over the last 30 or 40 years, having to do with infrastructure from a county perspective and the studies that have been done and things like that. And then I'll come back and talk about the four projects that we want to talk to you about tonight, so.
Well, I always seem to do the history part of things, but a good place to start, I guess, is with this book which we scanned and gave you all a copy of. I told Maxton at Rotary the other day that I promised him I would find my copy of this at least three or four years ago and I couldn't find it and nobody else seemed to have a copy of it either. So, so when the Randolph Room cleaned out the Courier Tribune, I found this under Chip Lomick's desk, so, and it had my name on it. So the moral of the story is don't loan your books to people, but.
It's your library.
Yes, well, and, and I told Maxton I'll make a, one brief plea. You guys need to set a policy for county agencies that at least one copy of every study that y'all, the county pays serious money for needs to be deposited in the Randolph Room and we put it on the shelf and people can find it. It won't circulate and it'll just be there for reference. But, you know, that's a simple thing. You're getting cop, multiple copies of them anyway. So I'm glad that you're doing another study now, but Hal will remember. I'm not sure who else was on that committee, Hal. But, you know, as the oldest rats in the barn, you know, we've, we've been on everything.
Thank you.
But this is the Northeast Randolph Preliminary Engineering Study on Water Alternatives. And the, the Water Resources Committee that I was on, the plan was for, we did, us to do one of these for all four corners of the county. And this was the only one we got finished before circumstances overtook everything. We needed to do water lines up 311 right away, so the, that whole area sort of developed without a study and, and we just never got back to it, I think. But you'll see that everything, all four of the proposals that we have proposed are in this study. And one of them that we already built is that water line up 22 to Providence Grove High School. And, and that was also one of the reasons that the study was done because the thinking was that all the schools needed to be on public water and sewer. And how did we get the lines to them? I'm happy.
Mac, can I, when was that done? What, what year?
19, October 15th, 1997, 25 years ago. So, you know, and, and it's an elaborate study. I mean, it had, had maps and cost analysis and things like that about where every line should go, how big they should be, everything like that. And some of it has changed, especially the size of the line and things like that. But everything we submitted in our application can be found directly in this study. I'm glad to hear the EDC has plans that directly benefit seven out of the nine municipalities in Randolph County. But I hope y'all look after the rest of us because, you know, the main reason that three of those seven projects are just about ready to go is because the county invested serious money in water and sewer infrastructure going up 311, going down 220 and around Liberty, around Archdale, so.
Well, now, Mac, those, the only lines going up 311 are from Random and Lake.
Yeah, and, and, you know.
And the county, other than our participation in the Water Authority, we didn't run those lines.
Okay, well, that was Randleman Water and.
Nor, nor up 220.
Yeah, not up 220, but at 311, to the treatment plant and everything. But, but, I mean, the, the point is that, you know, y'all triggered development along all those roads. And what we're trying to do is now develop a plan for 64 because development is going to happen there because of the, the southern loop. The southern loop, you know, ends right there at Trogden Hill. And one of our projects, we're working with Ashboro about their lines that go on the east side of that loop. They're, they're ready to transfer them to us, for us to look after them and, and look after those customers. So that's kind of a standalone project and that, that's triggered a lot of this. But all of our projects we've been working on for four years, more than four years, which is why they're all, they're all engineered and, and ready to bid. So this is, is, I think, important because we're following all the plans that, that we looked at that were necessary 25 years ago that would benefit and trigger development along there. Now, you know, what we're asking for, only one of them upgrades our sewer system because sewer is twice as expensive as water. And if you can, if you can make it flow downhill, it saves a lot of money by not having a pump station. So we actually had a project designed for a sewer system along the 64 corridor also, but it, price tag came back about five or $6 million. So, you know, that would add up to 15, 16 total. And we're trying to do all this, I mean, you know, we're asking you now because money came from heaven, you know? So, so we've been planning to do all this on our own if possible. So USDA loans are what we, what Perry's going to talk about. We also know that there's a lot of state money out there whenever they get their rules and regulations about how to apply for it and who gets it and stuff like that. But we're in a good position about some of that because we're operating as what the state has the last year and a half called distressed utilities. Because I guess while they were out working from home, they had a lot of time to look at audits and things like that. And so there's about 35 municipalities in the Piedmont that are, that they label distressed because it's hard for us to keep our enterprise funds in the black. And you know enterprise funds have to break even. And so our biggest problem with sewer is that there's not enough customers on it. Biggest problem with water is the price of, of the product that we buy to resell. And, you know, that's a, just a, just the way it is, we've been trying to work with that. But, you know, working with Ashboro provides an alternative. It doesn't necessarily help the existing system unless we cross Deep River. Because right now the, the, our, our lines from Ramsour on the 64 side and the lines from Ramsour on the town side are separated by the river and don't connect. So part of, part of this plan works on that. But in general, that's the, that's the context of what we're asking for here. And what we're doing is planning for growth because we, we have a lot of inquiries about 64. A lot of stuff happening, wants to happen right there around the Laughlin Pond intersection. And, you know, if we had sewer, of course, we'd, we'd be in even better shape because with sewer, we can require people to hook on. Even when you build a water line, you, you can take them, take them to it, but you can't make them drink it. So if you, if you have a sewer system, you can force them to, to take it. So that's why it works together and, and has a good impact. But I'll let Perry talk from now on unless y'all have questions for me.
Okay, let's see if I can operate this clicker here. Okay, we've covered the history part there and I've listed the four projects for you here. One is a extension of the water lines on 64 from where Ashboro's lines currently stop. That's around the Dewey Road area, if you know where that's at. That would extend all the way down to essentially around the Cabota Dealership area. I think that's a little bit over two miles. To make that project work would require a meter vault around the Trogden Hill area that would allow Ashboro to monitor and bill Franklinville for the water that goes east of that point. The third item is the Cedar Falls Upon a Loop that we want to talk about that will help provide a loop in your water system. We all know how dead-end lines are not the best thing. And then the third item is upgrades to the Ogle Creek Pump Station and forced main improvements. This is a map that has been prepared and you might see this big thing I've got right here. This is a preliminary engineering report that the town paid for. We started this project, like Mac said, several years ago. So we were a little bit ahead of the curve. We weren't expecting ARP money to be available. We were looking at USDA funds and perhaps some other funds, but as Mac stated now, we're considered a distressed utility. So we know there's, I've heard rumors of around $400 million that may be available from the state through that fund. So we're looking at multiple sources for funding for these projects. But what essentially it, it work, sees that heavy blue line there along 64 is what we're talking about expanding on this project. And, let's see. One of the, a couple of things about this, it fills in another piece of the countywide water system that Mac has already discussed. It will support economic development along that corridor. And I can't stress this point big enough. It will support or greatly benefit Franklinville's enterprise fund. Mac has talked to you about the fact that we're considered a distressed utility. That primarily has to do with the number of customers you have on your system. At, at first I was thinking of debating with the state over that, but I realized that it may open up additional forces, sources of funding for us, so I didn't contest it. I, I just let us, give us, give, give us that designation. But looking at what Ash, we can buy water from Ashboro for, and this is in the package, the application that you got, we're currently paying $6.32 for 1,000 gallons from, from our current supplier. We charge our customers 6.50, so we're making 18 cents per 1,000 gallons. And we've got high water rates in Franklinville, probably some of the highest in the county. We really cannot afford to raise our rates on our customers anymore. I mean, we've had several rate studies done and we have, we have bumped some sewer rates up and things like that. But one of the things that is kind of a double-edged sword with Franklinville is we're considered a low-income community. Now, that doesn't help you when you're trying to do things, but when you try to go for grant funds, that's a plus in your favor. So it kind of bites us one way and helps us in another way. So we can buy water from Ashboro for approximately 2.50 per 1,000 gallons. That's a $4 per 1,000 gallon difference. We could increase our enterprise fund substantially and still give our customers a rate cut. So I just want you to consider how big of a difference that will make to our community. And that includes customers that go up to the school, you know, the Highway 22 water line to Providence Grove. The, the funds that we're requesting or the cost of this project is estimated at 3.6, $3,662,000. That is a 12-inch water main that would be extended from where it currently ends to our 12-inch line down around the Cabota Dealership. I'm going to go through these if you want to come back and ask questions about them. The second project is a, is a meter vault on Highway 64. This project is an essential part. We've got to have it if we're going to do the water line. And the cost of that, since we broke, we asked our engineering firm to break these projects out because they put them in one big thing. So what we had them do is break it out into four projects. This piece is $261,000 for the meter vault. A meter for a 12-inch line is fairly expensive. The third item, third project is Cedar Falls Upon a Loop. The current water line goes down Laughlin Pond Road part of the way and then it turns to, bears to your left and goes down to the current Waste Management landfill. What we would like to do is extend that line on down Laughlin Pond Road, cross the river with a bore. It would pick up the future textile meal, textile musi, museum and also would pick up Saponna. Saponna has expressed an interest in hooking on to municipal water. They're currently on wells and they would like to get away from that. We would continue on, on the Cedar Falls Road, heading back into Franklinville and would hook on into our system there where the Highway 22 Cedar Falls Road splits. So that would provide a loop into town and would feed both sides of Franklinville because the river separates us. As a, a third part of this, what we would really like to do is do another water bore down around the Ogle's Creek Pump Station, which would create a loop on both sides of the river and would feed, would create a large loop through town. And we could feed both sides of the community without any problems. Hooking on to Ashboro too provides Ramsour with an alternate source of water should they ever need one because our lines go down. We currently draw water on the south side of the river through a 12-inch line that comes from Ramsour, crosses on the bridge there over Deep River and feeds that mobile home park and all our customers on that side of the river. So we could connect in and feed directly back into Ramsour. So, we could connect in and feed directly back into Ramsour. And the cost of that loop, because of the bore and because of the fact that there's rock, you get down around the river and there's rock everywhere, is four point four two five million dollars. And the last project we want to talk about is down at the Ogle's Creek Pump Station and forced main improvements. This pump station, and I've got, let me move on here. You'll see a couple of pictures here. The one on the left, at the top of the picture, you'll see a holding pond. And then directly south of that, you'll see a concrete structure. That is their current pump sewage treatment plant. That plant is designed for two hundred thousand gallons treatment. We're currently certified for a hundred thousand gallons. We're generally operating around fifty thousand gallons. Now, knowing that we were going for, you know, sewer line or water line improvements, we've already requested an increase to the two hundred thousand gallon limit, which our plant will currently take. Our plant is also a packaged plant that's easily expandable, and we have land around the plant that we're capable of doing that. If you look at the left picture there, that is the very end of the, what used to be called Deep River Haven Mobile Home Park. And that's very, down very close to the river. And you'll see right to the right of that last mobile home there, a little white structure. That is the pump station, and it's very close to the river. Now, when we had one of the hurricanes come through here, Florence, I think maybe when we had a lot of rain, it actually flooded this pump station. So, we got some FEMA money and replaced some items and everything. What we want to do is raise that pump station a little bit so that, you know, extreme weather events don't, don't affect it like before. We also would like to increase the, the forced main under the river, so that would require another bore. But it's fairly close. You can see from the first picture, it's fairly close to the treatment plant itself. And that, the cost of that is one point two nine two five, one million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars. So, those are the four projects that we're talking about. But we think that the Highway sixty-four water line is, is gonna be required if we want to do development. And that is gonna be our development area. We, we do not have areas on the north side of the river in the old part of town to do commercial or business development. It's just not, the property's not available, services are not available and things like that. Sixty-four is gonna be the development corridor for Franklinville. And we're trying to set ourselves up and the county so that we can provide services to that area as it begins to develop. We would like to do both water and sewer because that's what's required to really do full development. But we understand the cost of sewer right now seems prohibitive. And so, we're just trying to chisel away at it at a piece at a time. So, do you have any questions?
I would think it's kind of obvious. You have had discussions with Ashboro about.
We have, and they're willing to sell water.
And they're also willing to transfer ownership of that whole system that goes to Waste Management. Their, their plan, since the southern loop opened, is to, is to not service the lines on the east side of that system. So, they'd love to transfer, we talked to, I've been into Mayor Smith. They'd love to transfer it to us and let us look after it. We haven't got anything in writing on paper, but they've had their engineer work with ours about designing this meter vault and stuff like that. So, so if that happened, I mean, you know, that could go ahead and be built anytime because all it is, is a vault helping measure the water passing along that line. You know, they got money from the state to build that line to, to Cedar Falls because of, there was benzene in the water there at the intersection where Pue Oil is. And then y'all extended it, I think, when Waste Management came all the way down to Waste Management. So, that's how that line came into being.
So, how, how does this, how does this work with Ramsour?
Well, I mean, I'm looking at it from Franklinville's perspective, I'll be honest. I can't, I can't say that it wouldn't be detrimental to Ramsour because right now Franklinville is their largest water customer. But looking at it from my customer's, you know, standpoint, when we're paying, you know, a large dollar cost for water and frankly, in the past, have had some problems with the quality because, and we just put in a five hundred thousand dollar grant to improve the water quality, both in our system and what we're getting from the customer or the provider. But I, I, you know, I, I know it will have impacts on Ramsour. And, and I've talked to Jim and Vicky both and, and told them that we were looking at this project and wanted to pursue it because the beneficial standpoint from a dollar standpoint is, you know, just huge.
And also the state treasurer and the LGC have basically told us we need to do this. Because when you can buy water for less than half of what you're paying now, the numbers to the treasurer's office and LGC mean more than, you know, whatever the fallout is for, for your supplier. Now, you know, Mayor Smith told me, you know, they've lost their top two water customers too. You know, when, when the dye plants up in North Ashboro closed, those were the two biggest water customers in Ashboro. So, you know, everybody's been hit by losing a major customer.
Do you have any other source of funding? Let me ask you, and I'm going back, I, I, we've had a question about another municipality and, and the ask on the part of the state. And it's, part of that is because they are classified federally as a distressed area. Does Franklinville fit into that?
Generally, we do fall in what they consider distressed areas simply because of our income.
Because of what?
Because of income. And that's, that's why we are able to get grants or have been able to get grants for other, other projects is because of that. We're looking at multiple sources of funding. I mean, I know it would be nice if you guys would fund the bulk of it, but if we can get at least one project or two projects, that would be great. But we're looking, we started this originally looking at just USDA-type funding. Now, that would be a serious strain for Franklinville.
Perry, use, use the mic, please.
Okay, sorry. We, we're originally looking at just USDA funding. But for Franklinville, that would be a stretch because most of their funding now is loans.
It's loans?
Loans, right. But we're also looking at the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. We're also looking at the Distressed Utilities Fund. Because I know there's gonna be money in several pots there at the state level and trying to figure out when we can get to those and how much they're willing to fund. But I think the distressed utility designation will help us in a, a large respect because there's a pot of money set aside just for those so-labeled communities.
So, if you were prioritizing here, I'm assuming you would prioritize the pump station, the meter vault, and maybe the Cedar Falls Saponah Loop?
Well, if I were to prioritize, it would be the Highway sixty-four water line.
Yeah, that's your priority, that's your number one priority in it.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Essentially, the first two projects where you gotta have the meter vault and you gotta have the sixty-four water line. Those are essentially one project, and that would be the number one. Frankly, the Cedar Falls Loop would probably be number two. And the, the upgrades to the sewer system would be number three.
Okay.
Now, you know, the sewer, well, the sewer stuff would not be required immediately because we're not putting in sewer lines. It would be more or less planning for the future. And we're gonna continue to work on that even if it's not funded here because we know that's coming down the road. And we also need to do some things in that area that we're aware of. So, that would be my, my priorities.
Did y'all, I'm sorry.
Well, I, how many customers day one have you, would you have day one? I know Mac said without sewer, you can't really force anybody to hook on.
Right.
Have you talked to the?
We really haven't done a survey up and down sixty-four to see. What we, an incentive we did when we landed the lineup twenty-two was to give folks a cheaper cost if you hooked on then, whether you started using water immediately, but.
Right.
You know, and some of those, you know, depending on which side of li, of the road you're on is gonna require a bore if you, you get over to the other side. You know, doing bores under sixty-four there is gonna be expensive.
Right.
I don't know how many we'd have to do or where they'd wanna place them, engineers would have to figure that out. But.
Don't know, to be determined yet.
Yeah, to be determined, right.
Which side is?
If you don't know, you don't know.
Yeah, that would be a part of the, but, you know, some, a lot of times if you can give, give folks a little bit of incentive, you know.
Yeah.
Because sewer tap, or water tap now, I don't know, is what, sixteen fifty?
At least.
And we, I think, I think after the initial period, the initial period, I think, seven fifty, I think? I think, I think we cut the price to seven fifty if you hooked on as we were doing the project. After the project completed, it jumped to sixteen fifty. So, we had several people that hooked on or at least did a tap before, you know, during this construction.
But we never got as many people as we, as we estimated because residential customers basically are gonna wait until their well goes dry before they want to hook to the water line. Even if the water line goes right, you know, past the, so.
And that's not a real, that's not a real densely developed area either.
No, it's the, the potential. And that's one reason that Perry and I disagree slightly about prioritizing. Because I, I think it's still a, something of an open question because we don't know the state's criteria either for the distressed utilities money or for the.
Well, that, that was, that was my other question too. Have you, did y'all apply for any of the state money?
We have, we haven't yet. I don't think they've got those, well.
We, we've sent our notice in, that, gotta send the notice in first.
Right.
But, you know, we get our own part, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, no, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
We, we get a hundred, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand for two years.
Yeah, that's our personal pot of it. So, that's not really enough to do a lot. But, but, yeah, we, we sent the notice in that we want whatever art money that the state's gonna distribute through the big fund. But what I was saying is about, about, it depends on what, the priority to me depends on what has the biggest impact with our whole distressed utility thing with the LGC and the treasurer's office. Because they're gonna wanna see, you know, substantial reductions in, in the cost of operating our system. So, that may be that the line through Cedar Falls, which would hook up to the existing Franklinville system and allow us to have all of our customers on Ashboro water and, and reduce the price by half. That could be the one that they like. The other one, as I said, unless we can cross the river with the sixty-four water line, that's kind of a standalone thing. So, so it, it, there's a lot of interlocking factors in here. And, and even more stuff like you were talking about Providence Grove and hooking on to Liberty and stuff like that. It's not that easy to do that because Ashboro treats their water in a different way than Ramsour. So, you can't just mix it all together. You have to separate it. And you can totally separate it like we could do one half of the river and the other half of the river stay Ramsour or whatever. But if you completely want to go, you just have to stop it. Say at the sixty, at the Deep River Bridge or something and everything is Ashboro, you know. So, you know, there's a lot of moving wheels.
Just to give you an indication, the engineers estimated cost savings to our enterprise fund would be a hundred and fifty thousand per year. That's half of what we're paying now in water cost.
That's half of what you're paying now, what?
In water cost.
Cost.
I was gonna ask you, how many gallons do you bill a year? What was your total?
We currently are using about a hundred and thirty-five thousand a month.
Mac, Mac, you need to.
I, I think we're using a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty thousand gallons a, a month. It's over a million a, a year, right?
No, it's more than that.
Okay.
It's more than that.
Well, we use a lot.
You know, you know. Hundred and twenty-five. Yep. Hundred and twenty-five thousand a, a day.
Okay.
Well, when the schools are in operation.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons.
A day.
A day.
When schools are in operation, because there's three schools on the system. And when they're off for the summer, it drops like a rock.
Yeah, we, yeah. You do see it, see it go da, you do see it go down during the summer.
And how comfortable are you with these cost estimates?
As of last month.
Okay.
When we submitted the application, right off the, right off the cost sheet.
You know, the engineers did warn us that, you know, with the way costing materials are going, you know, it's, it's hard to guarantee what the cost would be once the project got bitted out and you were ready to start construction.
Well, you're gonna be the only people in the entire state that's gonna be doing any water sewer. So, I mean, you have plenty of, plenty of materials, plenty of contractors on it. So, I would expect it naturally to go down.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a war to, you know, get, find a contractor and get materials.
Middle school, high school, to elementary.
Well.
Good point.
Any other questions?
Which side of sixty-four is that line on now?
I think the, it's on the north side, I believe, now. Yeah, the Ramsour line's on the north side. I believe the Ashboro line is on the, the south side. But it crosses over sixty-four right there at the two gas stations at Laughlin Pond Road.
Oh, okay.
And goes all the way.
Oh, and it, yeah, and it goes all the way up to the landfill.
Goes all the way up to the post office and turns towards Waste Management, stops at Waste Management.
Other question.
Conceivably, which would mean this is too far into the weeds, would you come off of that side and stay on the north side? Is that how your engineers done? I didn't remember looking at that.
If we built the water line on sixty-four, you mean? We'd probably keep going down the, the north side that it, it's on because sooner or later, you know, to serve the other side, you've gotta bore under the road. And sixty-four is about a hundred and fifty feet or so that you'd have to bore. And the longer the bore is, the more expensive it is. So, sooner or later, I think we'll probably want a, like, twelve-inch line on the one side of the road and maybe an eight-inch, six-inch line on the other side of the road so you don't have to bore. And you sort of cross over at major intersections like Iron Mountain Road or Foxfire Road or something like that because, you know, the theory is sooner or later, you want to go down Foxfire Road into the country or down Iron Mountain Road into the country, just like you're going up Laughlin Pond into the country around Cedar Falls.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Okay, Ramsour.
John? Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm John Gray with Wooton Company. I am, Mayor Cottle wishes she could be here, but she was out of town on vacation this week. And so, she asked me and Jim to come present, and Jim said I get to do all the talking. So, that's why. So, I, I really appreciate it. And it's been really interesting to hear all these projects. I've been involved in several things. I was on the EDC board for several years. Actually was one of the designers for the Seagrove Ula Water System when it was put in back in the early nineties and have worked with the town of Franklinville, completing a project with them, dealing with the water quality issue that they were talking about. So, really involved in a lot of things. We've done some studies for the county, looking at that northeast water corridor and how to improve the system in there. So, I, I'm very interested in this, and I really think, appreciate the county looking at all alternatives for, for this money because it, it is a once-in-a-lifetime kind of thing. I mean, you don't just get handed millions of dollars very often. So, appreciate the opportunity to present to y'all tonight. And I did provide a slide presentation. And just go through these as the, I guess these are the vital water and sewer needs for Ramsour as they have them. So, the main pump station receives about ninety percent of the town's flow down near the, the river. And it was built in the nineteen-sixties, still has the original forced main that passes under Deep River. That forced main, so that's sixty years old. Used to be average life expectancy for pipe was fifty years. Now, they're saying maybe a hundred years. That is an, an old cast iron pipe. But it, what we would, the town would like to do is to replace that. They're just concerned about it breaking and the environmental hazard that would create would be a real problem. So, the project that they would like to do would be to directionally drill under the river. And that would not disturb the river. So, it's a very environmentally friendly approach to installing a new pipe. And that would carry the flow from the main pump station to the treatment plant, which is on the west side of the Deep River.
John, having these environmental issues can drag on. Have you had some discussions about going under the river and?
Generally, all the environmental agencies that we, you talk with, if you. Generally, all the environmental agencies that we, you talk with, if you start saying you're gonna bore under the river, it's no problem. We're doing a project right now down below Troy where we're boring under Little River. And it was a water line, but it's a directional drill. And you're required to go fifteen feet below the bottom of the river. And down there, it's mostly rock and they can bore through that now. It's, it's, it's really the more environmentally friendly because you're not digging a trench from above the ground and disturbing the trees and whatever. And the river banks, that's what they really are concerned about. So it is, it would be an approved environmental process for installing. As a matter of fact, CDBG, which is one of the most rigorous funding agencies, if you say you're gonna directionally drill, then they're like, okay, that's fine. So it is, it is the most accepted way to cross a, a river. Obviously, carrying ninety percent of the town's wastewater, it is a vital part of the Ramsour system. It's over sixty years old, needs replacement. The cost estimate, cost opinion, I wanna say, is approximately five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Now, I will say, and I actually laughed when Commissioner Haywood asked how reliable are those costs? Because right now, as engineers, we are using our best judgment and it is almost a swag. The way the market is now, the limited number of contractors you can get, the supply chain problems. We're just putting numbers out there. We're trying to put some kind of inflation factor on what we think would work. We think that's a reasonable cost for boring under the river. And that's basically all it would be. You'd tie in right where it is at the pump station, bore under the river, tie back in at the other end. So that's, that's the cost for that. And here's a picture of the force main as it comes, actually comes out of the bank and was laid across the bottom of the river when it was initially installed. Jim says he has nightmares about this thing breaking. And I, I believe it. I mean, if, if that thing. Yeah. So this has been a project, he, ever since I've talked with Ramsour, this is one of the projects he's been wanting to get done. It's just, it is, you know, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot of expense. Ramsour doesn't qualify for some of the things that Franklinville's talking about. They're not as poor a community. And therefore, they don't get CDBG funding as easily. There are certain areas that qualify, but it's just been hard for them to get funding for something like this. So that's one of the top priorities for them. The town would also like to do some sewer system rehabilitation. They really need to do more than this. We threw two thousand feet of sewer, about two thousand feet of sewer rehab work in the project. And Jim has talked with a local contractor and pricing it, if it's in an outfall, which means it's not along the road, you're not crossing driveways, you're not dealing with pavement, just digging and replacing the sewer line is really the less expensive way to deal with the sewer rehab or replacement. And so that's what he priced it on and we, we've got a, a rough cost of about half a million, a little over half a million for that. And the, the areas that we, he mentioned that he would really like to focus on, it's hard to see, but that's Moffett Street. If this has a laser, but whoops, that didn't do it. Moffett Street and Meadow Wood Drive are two areas that he specifically knows there are some problems with those lines that needs to be addressed. And they would really greatly appreciate some funding assistance to, to deal with that. Reed Creek Pump Station is on the eastern part of the town system. It serves, actually an industrial area that's really crucial to Ramsour now. Was, when it was constructed, for some reason, it was designed as a very shallow pump station. So what happens is the sewer flows into your pump station and you have pumps down in the, the wet well, is what it's called, where the sewer accumulates. Well, the distance from where that line comes into the pump station to the top of the pump station is very shallow. And so what happens is when a high flow occurs, it's more than the pumps can take, the water backs up and will overflow out of the pump station. And what this project would do would add some storage in that level. So we would build a couple of tanks beside the wet well and allow that sewer to overflow into those tanks when high flows occur. And then it would store there and then flow back into the pump station as the, the pumps catch up. So that's the purpose of this project. Not a huge cost, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Again, this serves the industrial part of the town and so would be very, very valuable to benefit industry in the county over in that eastern part of the county. I don't know if you can see where that is. Crawford Knitting's one of those. And then there's some other industrial buildings in that area. And of course, it does serve that northeastern part of the town, pumps it over to the other main pump station that then pumps it to the treatment plant. And that's a picture of the pump station. You can see it's way down. And so they were, when they built it, the sewer lines were able to be installed very shallow, which is great. The pump station's not very deep. But the problem is, again, you don't have any storage once that, if the pump gets overloaded for whatever reason. And then the tube station, this is on the west side of Deep River. That's a wonderful looking picture. How would you like to climb up that and then climb down a long tube down to where the pumps are? Jim's done it. I don't really wanna do that. Yeah, so that, you, you have to climb up to the top because they wanted to get above flood elevation. And then you climb down that distance plus another twenty feet to get down to the bottom. So it's, it's an old design. We really are using submersible pumps now. And what you do is you build a wet well that is watertight and it can handle those flood elevations getting over it. And then you put your electronics up on a platform, generator and controls. And, and then the station can operate even when it gets flooded. Again, this is another project, it's a little over half a million dollars, cost opinion. And serves about ten percent of the town's customers. And it pumps from this point down to the treatment plant. And so that, again, it's, it's, it's a very needed project. The water treatment plant filters and valve replacement, the town has actually gotten a quote from Underwood and Associates for this work. This treatment plant currently provides water to town of Ramsour, Coal Ridge School, Eastern Randolph High School, town of Franklinville, making a very vital part of providing water to eastern part of Randolph County. As we heard, the county, you know, could be looking at extending water up Highway forty-nine to potentially serve Liberty. So it could even be more vital to the, to serving the eastern part of the county. The treatment process includes gravity filters and those filters, media in those filters needs to be replaced periodically. And it's just been long enough where that needs to be done and it's, but along with that media needs to be some valves replaced for proper operation of this plant. The cost is about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for that. And that's, that's all we, I tried to get a picture in of the filters, but it, it's just water. So, I mean, didn't really show much on that. But I'd be happy to answer any questions and Jim is willing to speak up if needed. But appreciate this opportunity to ask for these funds for the town of Ramsour.
What was that last one?
The water filter replacement. The cost was two hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
Thank you.
And that was based on a quote that had been provided by a contractor. So that, that's, should be pretty good, although that quote's.
Six months old, four months old?
About six.
About six months old, so.
John, could you just kind of roughly prioritize those for us?
I, I think they're in the priority that the town would put on them, the, the, the one through five. The, the main pump station, force main replacement, again, is something that Jim's been worried about for thirty years. And Jim, my understanding is that force main's not actually really buried. It's on the bottom of the river. Okay, so it is supposed to be three feet. Below the bottom of the creek. Okay. So, but it's enough to where it's, you know, it's at the bottom of the river. So you get a tree or a log coming down could hit it, especially on the bank. You saw that bend where it came out. So that, that's just a real big concern for them. The sewer rehab is just a problem they have. They do have a lot of inflow and infiltration, which is when it rains, it gets into the sewer system. And so by doing sewer rehabilitation, you reduce that. That reduces the amount they treat, which reduces the, it reduces what the sewer system has to handle. So it cuts back on overflows. So, and then the Reed Creek Pump Station, the Tube Pump Station and the Water Treatment Plant. Would you agree those are your priorities?
Yes, sir.
Those, I tried to list them by priority.
The, the two, the Reed Creek and the Tube Pump Station?
Yes, sir. Those, all of those, so one through, was it five, six, six projects? Sorry. Two, three, four, five, five projects in that, in that order.
And I, I don't know, I'm, I'm going back a little bit on memory and that's usually not a good thing. But I know several years ago, I think the board was approached about some, there's some contaminated wells out north forty-nine.
Yes, sir.
I was a little surprised I didn't see any mention of, of, of that.
Yes, sir.
Can you enlighten us on what?
So I talked with Ramsour about that. I, I've sort of pushed that. I, I said, you know, y'all need more customers and this is the way to get them. But they went through some sign up process and about half the people along there weren't that interested in the water line. And so they were concerned that they're gonna put in this water line that would probably be designed for a future connection to Liberty, possibly, would make sense. It's gonna be probably a twelve inch line and you have twenty-five customers on it. So there's gonna be dead water sitting there that they're gonna have to go out to the end and flush constantly to try to keep the water fresh and, until it was extended up to Liberty or, or whatever. But if it was built, there is the possibility that additional development would occur, which would then address that. So it, it's a balancing act, you know, that, right now, they didn't see that as their top priority, even though they do need additional customers. Especially if Franklinville decides to do something different for a water source, then they definitely are gonna need more water customers.
I, I think from our standpoint, there's people out there that have bad wells.
Yes, sir.
And this would be an opportunity to, to help those folks.
And, you know, I really think that Ramsour would support that, but I don't think from their perspective, it was the top priority. I think as a county, it very well could be a, a top priority to try to get water to those people that are in the county.
Is this at the Browns, Browns grocery?
Browns Grocery is the area. Yes, sir.
Cause that's a little bit away.
We tried to get some CDBG money several years for that and it just didn't qualify for enough points to get funded. And then they looked, started going down the USDA process and started talking with people a little bit more. And they had enough of them say that they really weren't interested in closer to this, to town. I mean, really, that's who they're trying to serve. I mean, even though it does help to get a few more customers, it's a big expense to pick up, you know, I don't remember how many it was, seventy-five, eighty? Yeah, and then how many of those sign up? So it's, that's, that's the challenge. But it, but again, i- if it can spur development throughout the county as residual from the economic, the mega site, if you get a business that, you know, if somebody settles there, then you get some other businesses or, or housing developments that occur along those main highways. When we did the study for the county, looking at the northeastern corridor, that was really what we were thinking about is the, the main highway, sixty-four, forty-nine, four, four twenty-one, going up twenty-two, looping all that together and trying to encourage development, very much like what Mac was talking about earlier. When you put that in, you can get some development that occurs from it.
I mean, that would put you about halfway to Liberty.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If, is it possible that people have contaminated wells and don't know it?
Depends on how contaminated they are.
Depends on how to test it too.
Yeah.
Because it seems to me like if there were people in the area whose wells are contaminated and they know it, they of course would be willing to sign on. But then it seems to me like if you wanted to investigate that, then you could encourage other people to get their wells tested and it might very well be that other people have contaminated wells and just don't know it.
John or Jim?
Yes, that's true.
Help me a little, you know.
Yes, sir.
Several years ago, the state shut down Coal Ridge Elementary School because of E. coli in the water. And we ran, the county participated with Ramsour to run the water line from the town all the way down to that school.
Okay.
It seems that we had pretty good results of people along the way tying on to that la, that line.
Yeah. That's a concern. It's, it's a dead end line that goes all the way out to Coal Ridge School. I mean, there's, there's some arguments that we could put in a chlorine booster station. And what, what they're having to do is flush enough water to get the chlorine out there. And so you could put a chlorine booster station in and, and feed, we did a study for this town several years ago about disinfection byproducts. And actually, the project that Franklinville did incorporated one of those recommended improvements. Another one was to put a booster, chlorine booster down there to maybe cut down on the amount of water they have to waste. But that, that's not a project that we listed here. Certainly could be something that could be done. But, yeah, that, that, that's right. I mean, there, there is some benefit to that. I don't know how much really development has occurred because that water line's available though.
But that line could handle quite a bit more development, couldn't it?
Say, I'm sorry?
That line could handle quite a bit more development.
Yes, an eight inch line. Yes, sir. But it's clean water now.
It's clean water.
So, I mean, it was a good thing, it needed to be done.
Yeah, they, they haul trucks in down there to, for the school to keep the, so they can flush the moods, get the kids back in school.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Anything else? Questions? Thank you, both.
Thank you.
John, Jim, thank you.
Good to see you, John.
Okay, we have one more issue that Will, you wanna, you have at your places a, the format for RFQ. So we can develop cost and engineering on these various plans?
Right. We, we really need to, and I think Kevin Franklin said it best when he said we need to make sure we're capturing the biggest impact possible to all of Randolph County. John Gray said the same thing. And, and what we've seen tonight are major needs that we have in various communities in Randolph County. But we, it's, it's, it's a picture that we were looking at tonight. But we need someone, a firm, a planning firm, engineering planning firm, to help us complete that picture that we're seeing tonight. And what we've, would like the board to, okay for, for me to begin that process is to solicit a request for qualifications from an engineering and planning firm that can work with the county staff. Look at these requests and ultimately come back to the Board of Commissioners with the best plan that, that impacts the county that, that we can come up with. We also would like to use the consultant as engineering and planning consultant to make sure that when we're allocating the recovery funds to a particular project, that there's not also other money out there that we could be accessing to, for this particular project. And what, what I would ask for you to do is to go ahead and authorize me to, as the manager, to begin a solicit request for qualifications. And I'd like to appoint a qualifications review committee of the county. We want to put this on a fast track. We don't want it to linger very long. But the review committee would consist of the manager, the assistant manager and finance officer, our public works director. And I'd like to have two county commissioners on that review committee also. And I'm, I'm recommending the chairman and, and the vice chairman, if they would be willing or if the board wants to go that way. And what we would do, that small, that group is to interview the proposals when they come in and to select a, an engineering planning firm to work with the county, put all, put all this together and to make sure that we're accessing.
Uh, anyone have an issue, or, I guess, have a motion on the, uh, review committee?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think it makes a lot of sense, so I'd go ahead and make the motion.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, okay.
We'll, we'll put that out for qualifications, uh, for, uh, tomorrow, actually.
And I do want to pick up Hal's word of, uh, fast track, because, uh, we're already getting some questions from our previous group that we met, where when are we gonna get our money, how long is this gonna take? Uh, as fast as we can and be fair about this and maximize the benefit of every dollar we have, uh, I think, you know, this money's divided over two years, we, as long as we encumber it, we got through two thousand and twenty-four, I believe it is, and, um, we, we want to get the best value and get it done right, but, um, we'll, we'll go through that, do this, and then the whole board will get back together, and we'll follow recommendations on how we prioritize the use of the money, uh, so, uh, believe me, we, we want to get it done as fast as we can, half of that money's in the bank, right now, uh, before the end of May, wasn't it, Will?
I'm sorry?
Our first check, wasn't it?
It came in May, and the second check will come the following May.
And the next one can't be less than twelve months from that date, so, uh, next May, uh, so, just make that comment for, for everybody concerned, and I do want, for the board, because last time, there was some mention, uh, I did it, y'all might have known all, but, there was a request on our list for Ashborough Acne McCrery, and it was for the ballpark. There was also a request on the state from, from the House, from Patton Allen's, for one and a half million for Acne McCrery, Ashford Acne McCrery. That's not the same projects. The state money is for Ashborough to buy that old Acne McCrery building and turn it into apartments and a commercial, whatever, so it, it, you know, we thought that-
Right.
-same project is on both, but it's not. One is the ballpark, which is on our list, and one is for the building, which is on the state's list.
They need, Ashborough needs to, uh, name their projects differently, so everything-
They both were named the same way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's confusing enough.
That's right.
Without that.
Okay, so, um, that's all I have, anybody have any other questions or, or comments tonight? Oh, I do, we did have some comments here on the Trinity money that's on the state list, uh, texted Pat, says they are considered a distressed area, the funds would help with larger lines, repair of pump states, and sort of what we're hearing here tonight, at Steeplegate, many, many other things they need, I don't know, but they are going in with High Point that will save them millions of dollars, and then she said their manager, Debbie Henson, could provide more details, so evidently, they got several projects that makes up their six million dollar request that's on the state's line, it's, it did not come through us, but we, we had some discussions about just what it was for, I, I don't know about the tie into High Point, but, I know High Point City Limits extends into Randolph County, um, along the Business Eighty-Five Corridor. All right, part of Thomas Buss's is in Randolph County. Anybody have anything else? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, we are adjourned. Thank all of you again, thanks to folks for watching.